January, February.
Yeah.
Sit in the box now.
That'd be pretty cool.
Hey.
I thought I heard the start of Hey Ryan and then it cut off.
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, let's go ahead and kick off this city council workshop meeting. It's October 21st, 2025. We're down at the mill and this is going to be a workshop. We are recording this session and we'll post it later on YouTube. We have council members present. I know that council member Donna who's online with some sick family and then council member Shipman will not be with us tonight and council member Hilt will be late due to getting off work. So and then a little bit about, so I'm going to go ahead and run the, run the show since it'll just be easier to facilitate. So. I'll call the meeting in order, just a little bit on the agenda. We're going to do a couple of discussion items on the pros plan and then the salary survey follow up. We are then going to go into an executive session during the executive session. We're going to clear the, the room for about probably 15 minutes while we do an executive session. And then we'll have the audience come back in if they wish, and then we'll get into a budget discussion.
Hey Brett, when we do the executive session, because I, I hear people saying that they're like there's secret things happening or deals are being behaved behind closed doors. It's not transparent. Would you, can we maybe shed a little light on that? Because it seems like a little disingenuous for those types of arguments to be made. But I'd sure appreciate hearing what the purpose of executive session is and what the topics are for that. That might be helpful for the public and people that are listening so they can have a clear understanding of what's actually taking place.
Yeah. So, and maybe Greg would be better to chime in.
Yeah, Craig is on.
To better explain what an executive session is.
Okay, he's getting off right now.
Nice discussion as I understand it, it deals with strategy for collective bargaining. And technically even that's really not an executive session. The Open Public Meetings Act makes specific provision to allow for. The council to close the meeting to the public while you discuss strategy for collective bargaining. And that's obviously unnecessary if, because if you're going to go into collective bargaining, your particular strategy, each team needs to have their own strategy. And be able to bargain in good faith with, with one another. Executive sessions on the whole, that's, that's covered by a different section. Of exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act. And, and again, the situations or circumstances under which you can go into executive session. Are things that need, where you need to have a private discussion. Most of the time when we go into executive sessions, it's to. Deal with matters that might be in litigation, dealing with lawsuits that have been filed against the city, discussing possible settlements. And those are the types of things that are conversations that need to be held privately so that you can again have. Legitimate fair, good faith negotiations with the, with the other party. It's certainly appropriate to, to, before you go into an executive session to discuss the general subject matter of what the. Executive session or close portion of your council meeting is, is about, but the details of that discussion. And what is said is meant to be private. In fact, there's a section of the statutes dealing with ethics for city council members is. That they are prohibited from discussing with anyone what was discussed in an executive session. It's a violation of state law and unethical to do that. And again, that's necessary and proper to promote the purposes for which those. Private sections of the meeting are, are held. Does that help, Steve?
Yeah, that's helpful. I think that's a good explanation for those that might be interested in factual information.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I agree, Greg. I appreciate you kind of updating on that. It's, it's always important to know that there's strategy making and then if there's an action to follow, that's when. That's when we come out of an executive session and council members are then. Able to create action based upon the knowledge that they just, however that action might go. So no shady deals in executive session. And all those deals come out in the open when they do that vote for action. So.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, Mayor. And I probably should have said that the, the council is prohibited from taking any votes. Or actions within the executive session. They can discuss a particular matter. But they can't come to any decisions and they must do that in an open public session.
That's correct. All right, good, good update on that. Let's kick this agenda off then. Jill, let's talk about the pros plan.
Thank you. Tonight I have our consultant Steve Duke with Conservation Techniques. So sorry, we wanted to thank you and we presented to the council what are the framework of the plan would be and our schedule. And then we held a public open house as well as a statistically valid survey was distributed throughout the city. And we also met with individual stakeholders and then also in groups or youth athletics, general users and park enrichment. We have some results from that that we wanted to go over with council and then also get your input. For moving forward, we have our second open house scheduled for November 10th and we'd like to know. If you have any questions, answer those questions and then your, your thoughts and feelings moving into this next section. So I am, are in your packet tonight is the presentation and Steve with Conservation Techniques is going to be providing that. Presentation for you and be answering any questions and I'm here and Sarah as well if you have anything else. So with that, unless you have any questions right off the top of your head before we go into the presentation.
Who, give us a flavor of the stakeholders.
The stakeholders that had interviews were folks that had put, for example, put on events in our parks or they had been. Involved in youth athletics and booking spaces and users, general users of the park. And then folks in the community that we've worked with in partnership for, for different services.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Jill. Good evening, council. Again, Steve Duke, Conservation Techniques, just have a brief presentation to walk you through. An update on where we are with the pros plan. And in that, just want to give you a real quick recap of the purpose of the plan. Of what we're, what the timing and timeline looks like. And then as Jill noted, reference the. High level results from the community survey and the stakeholder discussions and then leave some time for discussion with council. So just. To recap and as a high level refresher, the Parks Recreation and Open Space Planner Pro's Plan is intended to serve as the city's 10 year strategic plan for all things parks and recreation. Related to parks, facilities, open spaces, trails, active space, passive space. And it really is intended to be the guiding document for laying out the foundation for future investments in Lake Stevens Parks system. And a benefit to having a plan is that it enables the city to pursue state based grants through the Recreation and Conservation Office. And that's actually a requirement to, to pursue state grants. So having a plan will. Put you on the right path to be competitive against other jurisdictions across the state for funding future park improvements. In terms of the overall project timeline, the project is roughly a 10 month process and we're about halfway into the project. And the first phase of the project was really about. A baseline understanding, getting our facts and figures straight, knowing which way is up in Lake Stevens. That included doing site assessments of all these existing parks and open spaces. It also included the first push on community engagement, which was the community survey, the focus groups, stakeholder interview. And an initial session, joint session with city council and the parks board. And right now we're in the process of digesting what we heard. So when we're in that needs assessment phase of taking in all that information, starting to think through potential project ideas, potential policy and goal. Amendments that can go into the plan that could get also reflected in the comprehensive plan going forward. And in the next phase, as Jill noted, we'll be doing a community open house in about two weeks. Where we'll be putting out some ideas to see what sticks, see if we're going in the right direction, wrong direction. And take some additional feedback before we put a plan together.
Could you tell me what the operational definition of open spaces?
Open space is the natural area that's not programmed as an active park space. So it could be a remnant woodland or freeway. But it's, it's not the space where the ball field exists and the existing plan that the city has has classifications for each park type. That will carry forward in this plan as well. And Jill or Sarah, if you want to have anything else.
A, a good example of an open space would be Mill Cove just to the south of this building. That's the area between Main Street and the lake. That's, it's an open space. We call it Mill Cove Park, but it's, there's no programming there. There's no usable land, but it has a value of. For habitat and then also for views and, and keeping it undeveloped.
So what about the wetlands just south of us?
That would be Mill Cove. I think we're, it's, it's right on the backside of like the row club and whatnot. That is Mill Cove.
Oh, okay.
Mill Cove, Mill Cove Reserve, I think is the technical name. There's other places that have open space throughout the city, but that's an example of them.
Okay, thank you.
So as I noted, the, the next phase really is again, getting some additional public feedback on some potential ideas that we're starting to formulate. Before we start to put a plan draft together, that plan document will come together at the latter part of this year and then go into internal review and review with. The Parks Board and Planning Commission, City Councils early in next year. So I just want to take a minute to give you a recap of the survey highlights. So just as a refresher. We initiated a online and mail community survey several months back. It was a random sample mail out survey to 2,500 households. And it was also an online survey that anyone else in the community could take. In total, we had 611 responses and from just the. Mail out random sample portion, we had slightly over 300. So we had about 13% response rate. So we're plus or minus 15 or plus or minus 5% in terms of. Validity on the, on the responses. So in all, we've got a very solid base of random sample responses and we've got a, a wider base of overall responses from the community. So. 600 plus responses is a great start for getting some general feedback for the pros plan. And in terms of what we heard, nearly everybody who took the survey, 97% feel that parks and recreation opportunities are either essential or important to the quality of life in Lake Stevens. Can't get much higher than that. So it's a great baseline. And it's just, it shows the value that parks. And recreation opportunities hold in the community's sense. So again. Providing for parks and recreation opportunities is a, is a strong benefit for the community. In terms of how people are using parks and open spaces, a little over three quarters, 78% say they visit park at least monthly. And you can see in the chart how that splits out. So there's definitely a core group that is out there at least daily or weekly. But you've got three quarters of your respondents out there at least on a monthly basis. So people value having access to parks in the open spaces and they're using them. We had a pair of questions in the survey about satisfaction and condition. I know there have been comments from residents in the past about. Maintenance and upkeep of parks. So we wanted to test a little bit about where the community in general sits with regard to maintenance and overall park conditions. First off, again, about three quarters, 73% feel that they're either very or somewhat satisfied with the city's parks and open space system. And then we had a question that asked about the condition of specific parks, just again to gauge. Sentiment around each individual park and whether one particular park needed some additional maintenance or care or upkeep. And you can see in the chart that across the board, there is a good sense that the, the condition of each park is either good or excellent. And there are a few instances where you have strong fair or poor condition. And I would say some of that, like with Westlake, could be related to the underdeveloped nature of that site. So it's always hard to, it's hard to know. Why people respond the way they do. But it's also good to be able to test it and. Ultimately follow up on these sorts of questions on a periodic basis, maybe every four or five years or with the next pros and update. In terms of the reasons why people are visiting, you can see in the chart. That walking and running is the top reason for people to be out in the parks, followed quickly by relaxation and then coming together for events. And just having access to the beach and the playgrounds. That's really your core group of uses for, for, for folks to come out. After that, it goes into additional family gatherings, water, swimming access, dog park, nature viewing. Strong sentiment about wanting to make sure that there remains some more passive spaces in the community, some more natural spaces. So that comes through in, in this question a little bit. And then diving deeper, you get into more of the specialized uses. That may not pertain to everybody, but are definitely important to add value to the overall park system. Things related to personal fitness or sport fields or sport courts, fishing, things like that. We asked a similar corollary question about why are you not coming more often out to parks? The top reason was people simply don't know what's offered. And that 22% said that and it comes through in terms of some of the write-in comments related to. Website or social media access, limited information about where the parks are and what's offered at the parks or just a challenge of knowing what's available. Other reasons for not coming out include lack of transportation or a sentiment that parks aren't maintained or their own personal. Age or physical limitations as well as physical accessibility challenges related to things like ADA accessibility. All of that really helps give us information as we've digested the, the site assessment. Information from the parks to think through where future improvements could be made to address some of those issues. In terms of where the community sits in their sentiment about. How much of what is provided and how well that's provided. We have a like a Goldilocks question. Is the porch too hot, too cold or just right? And in this case, it's a question that offers six specific types of space. And asking whether or not the city is offering enough, not enough for the right amount of those amenities. And you can see again, related to the earlier question about walking and having access to trails as a top reason for coming out to parks. There is also a strong sentiment that there are not enough places to walk or bike on trails. So walking and biking comes through in multiple questions as a strong interest and it helps validate the survey in the sense that. Similar responses across different questions give strength to the response itself. You can see also in the chart that there is a demand in for additional amenities and that demand comes through in terms of. Sport courts, even providing additional events or partnering for events and just having spaces like picnic areas or shelters for folks to come together and gather. We also had a question in there about why are you leaving Lake Stevens to go do other recreation? Again, walking, hiking, biking trails was noted as well as kind of the more programming side of recreation. Going for programmed activities or program sport events and also indoor recreation. And, and culture and art activity. So those are the sorts of things that to be currently doesn't offer, but may want to consider going forward. For the types of amenities that people feel strongly about and have strong interest in. Again, a bit of a lengthy chart here, so I apologize, but right at the top, again, you can see trails for hiking and trails for walking. Are the top interest for the community in terms of the types of amenities they'd like to see in parks. Beyond that, it starts to get more into improving water access or even offering a splash pad. As well as group gathering spaces and that comes through in terms of either like an amphitheater or performance space or. Just having additional picnic shelters or sheltered areas for people to come together and gather. And again, as with an earlier question, it gets much more special as farther down the list you go. For recreation program types, we asked again a question about what are your interests for different program classifications and here. Similar to the response we had for why are you leaving Lake Stevens? The types of things people are interested in seeing the city offer more of include things related to. Special events, arts, youth sports, adult fitness, teen programs, kind of the classic parks program area amenities and programs. So there's again, some latent demand for those sorts of amenities and programs. However, that triggers the question of where would you have those. Classes offered or who could you partner with to have those classes offered? So the survey also had a question in there about. Support for additional indoor recreation facility space and. 85% said that they were either very or somewhat supportive of the city considering additional indoor recreation facility space and of that 85, about 50% was very supportive. So turning a little to some priorities, this was a question where we asked people to specifically rank one through five this list. Again, trails is right there at the top and this chart actually quite clearly shows the top three. So we've got trails, we've got renovating existing parks and adding recreation amenities. As well as acquiring additional land for future parks. It came through and several write-in comments that there's. Some interest in the community to either preserve or purchase additional land for park space as well as. Purchase additional water access sites on the lake. And then just summarizing what we heard generally from the survey and what we also heard through the stakeholder conversations, I bundled these into two groupings. One is kind of the take care of what you have sort of responses. So continue to upgrade your existing parks, which you have been doing, address accessibility. So making sure that. You know, benches, tables and other elements are accessible and usable for users of all abilities. And balancing the investments between the neighborhood parks, the traditional neighborhood parks and lakefront based recreation. General communications, general maintenance and upkeep and continue to pursue partnerships to. Expand on what you provide. In terms of expanding recreation options, looking to expand. Trail connections, providing for additional sport courts and that's sport courts for different types of sports, tennis, pickleball, basketball. As well as for fields. And by the way, congratulations on Cavalier Hill. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that. It's a great. Addition to the system and I hope you're all thrilled that that's, that's in the city's control now. That provides you some potential space for some of these amenities. So I, I think that'll be an interesting dialogue going forward. But the other piece to recreation options is about covered space and that includes again, not only picnic shelters, but. The idea of shade structures maybe around playgrounds too. So before the session, Jill and I were commenting that, you know, the. Hot summers that we've had in the last several years, I think have triggered people to request in the survey at least more options for shade. Across the park system. So that covers the, the survey and the stakeholder highlights in general. And I just have a couple more quick slides to walk you through. This next pair of slides is kind of taking that leap between. What we heard from the survey and that kind of physical planning of what's on the ground and what the city offers and. How the, the park system is distributed across the city. So one of our tasks is to look at the distribution of parks and general. Kind of service level of parks and that translates into. And that translates into looking at the distribution and access of parks. So who has reasonable access, whether it's, you know, within a half mile or a mile for a neighborhood park, or two and two and a half miles for a community park, and what that looks like as a mapping process. So this is a draft version, a working draft version of a map, just to illustrate how we think through the distribution of parks. So to just really quickly walk you through the concept here, we have two, three tones of pink on the map, and they're weighted in color. So the darker tone is a quarter mile, the medium tone is a half mile, and the pale tone is a one mile. And those represent travel sheds from existing park entry points, not park boundaries, not park property lines. So they're legitimate pins on a map for places you can enter legitimately to a park. And then from each pin, kind of like when you're, you know, telling your phone to give you directions, you put your pin on the map, and we travel along the road network and then connect all the dots. So these shaded polygons represent the travel sheds for all of the park system. So if you're in kind of the darker hues, you have closer access to a park entry. If you're in a white zone, you are outside of that one mile travel shed. So it helps inform not only the distribution of parks, but potentially the next step in thinking through, are there opportunities for acquisitions to help fill some gaps? So we're not there yet, but this is just a way for us to start processing kind of the on-the-ground reality of who has access based on development of the city. Another aspect to looking at levels of service and understanding what the city offers is comparing it to other jurisdictions. And one tool that we use for that is looking at the National Recreation and Park Association, NRPA. They have a data set where annually they request data from jurisdictions across the country to provide, you know, quantities and numbers of what they've got and the like. And they also provide that data as a breakout for the aggregate for all jurisdictions across the country, but also segmented by jurisdiction size. So we're not comparing Lake Stevens to New York City. We're comparing Lake Stevens to a similarly sized community. So we've got two columns of data, all agencies is everybody. And then the similar sized communities are more akin to Lake Stevens. And the thing I want to highlight here is for each of these amenities, that it's based on population, so the quantity of amenity per population is how it's structured. So for example, if we just look at the top line, playgrounds, the average across the country is that there's one playground per thirty-seven hundred people. Where in Lake Stevens, it's one playground per six thousand people. So the city offers a slightly lower service for playgrounds relative to other jurisdictions. Again, this is just a tool. This is not a way to gauge or judge the city, but it helps illustrate those areas where the city might want to focus, especially with opportunities like Cavalier to think about other ways to provide for recreation. So the things that jump out for me on this chart are about sport fields, diamond and rectangular fields, as well as sport courts. So today in your system, there's less sport court and sport field provided per capita than there are for other jurisdictions. So again, it is consistent with what we heard from the survey, and it's just a way to measure and think about what the city offers or could plan for going forward.
Are you only keeping city assets on that list?
Thank you for pointing that out. I was going to note that this does not include school district facilities.
Or HOA playgrounds?
Correct.
So it's actually better than that when you take those facilities into, you know, right?
It is. So this is again preliminary working draft sort of material, but.
And as far as diamond fields, why wouldn't you count Bonneville Field? That's a baseball field that the city owns.
This particular set of data was put together by what the city programs, what the city can offer its residents, and Bonneville is under a long-term lease with the Little League. So if a prospective group was coming in to rent that, they would have to either partner with Little League, but we wouldn't program that from our resources.
Okay.
Mainly, I think that's to keep it apples to apples with the comparison of other jurisdictions that we see within our PA. What this doesn't tell us is how many of those have large HOAs represented in their communities, where ours is a little unique.
My concern though, Sarah, is like that number gets out, and it makes us look like we don't have enough playgrounds, when in reality, our community development has required those things within our city, within HOAs. So it's not a good representative number. Maybe you need to add a column that says with private facilities, we're at this level.
True. And we could add a column that references the school district and other providers, so to speak. So again, just wanted to offer this as a framework of information to show we're making some progress forward and thinking through where the city is today, and what sorts of amenities might be on the table for consideration going forward. And really just wanted to just wrap up to remind you that, again, we've got the open house on November tenth. There will be future discussions with the board and council, and we'll go for plan development in the last part of this year, early next year for review and approval process. So we have multiple touchpoints with council going forward, and just want to, again, leave some time for discussion or feedback, or if given what you've heard from the survey, if there's anything you want us to probe a little more in the open house that's coming up.
Where's the open house at here at the Milt?
I guess for me, I see like expanding walking and biking trails, where, you know, so, you know, is it east side of Lake? Is it, you know, you know, there's areas where we have, you know, more walkable space than others. That will be helpful information. I mean, in my view, what I see in going through the city east side of Lake is our maybe least walkable portion of the city. And a lot of that wasn't even the city up until recently. You know, so that's something that we're trying to improve retroactively. But that would be helpful for me to know, you know, for the feedback that we get from the city, from the residents, because they have valuable input.
So I assume that this is a part of our comprehensive plan at the end of it. We put this in as part of our comprehensive plan, so we have opportunities inside of the ten-year span of this plan to make adjustments. Like if we are able to come up with other park properties that we're buying, we can insert that into the plan and those kinds of things, right?
So I would also like to add, so we have Just Serve, which is a service opportunity for people to do. And just for reference, the city of Boise, which is roughly six times larger than our city, has equivalent of twenty-three FTEs of service that are offered in their parks. Imagine if we had four FTEs worth of service rendered within our city. And I've been to other cities recently and seen people working that are non-city employees engaged in those types of activities. It's tremendous resource, especially for our city has limited resources. We have a lot of capable people, twenty-five percent of our population's under twenty, had a lot of capable people that can engage in those activities. I love the sandbagging service opportunity that the mayor did shortly after he was elected. We saw lots of people there. I don't know, I'd say close to a hundred people showed up on a cold morning and loaded sandbags to help, you know, do that. There are a lot of people in our community. So I'd love to see who's willing to chip in and help out and make our city an even better place to live.
Anything else?
I did want to add, for this plan, when we have the stakeholder interviews and those focus group interviews, those were done with our consultants, subconsultant consort that specializes in that kind of work. And so those folks that were brought in were interviewed and asked questions without, you know, city staff there, so they were able to freely, you know, answer however they wanted to. The consort specializes in that kind of work, and they were able to get some great feedback. And then this also does keep us compliant with the comprehensive plan. It will replace the parks chapter in the plan.
Cool. Hey, great report. Great, great start on this thing, and looking forward to that open house on the tenth. Thank you. Cool. Anya, let's talk salary survey. Let's do it.
Good evening, council. We're here to talk tonight to bring back the salary survey with compensation connections, and they are online, and I'm going to share a PowerPoint. I apologize, it didn't go out in advance, but we'll get the part of the packet out to you guys after the meeting. And then we'll have an executive session to follow to talk about collective bargaining impacts of the salary survey. With that, Shannon and Kathy, if you could share your screen and get going.
Great. Thank you very much. I'll share my screen now. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. All right. So again, like Anya said, we'll update you all on the compensation study. And okay, I'm going to stop share. I think I accessed the wrong version, so my apologies. And I'll do this again. Appreciate your patience. There we go. All right. So this is continuing the conversation from about a month ago. So when we conducted the study, we collected the market data and then wanted to start with sort of recapping here the comparison of the non-represented jobs and the Teamsters jobs, their current pay ranges compared to market data. In this instance, we're using the sixtieth percentile as the market reference point. So when I talk about the market, that's what I am talking about. And you can see in the charts that the non-represented jobs, on average, the current range midpoint is about ninety-five percent of the market, and the Teamsters jobs on average are ninety-one percent of the market percentile. And then the table immediately below in the lower right is just a summary of how the jobs align by department. So we're seeing there the average by departments with, you know, a low of ninety-one percent for police, and a few departments have a high of ninety-seven percent on average, and that's as a percent of market.
And I'll add here that the last few weeks we've been going through, and I've been auditing every single job match, and we've made some adjustments, and that's why these numbers are a little bit different than what we saw a few weeks ago, because we've been fine-tuning and adjusting everything to make sure it's all matching our jobs.
So the question I have right away is on the Teamsters jobs are ninety-one percent. Is that funding and, I mean, is that Parks and Recreation and Public Works together?
Yes.
How do you get ninety-one percent out of ninety-four percent and ninety-three percent?
So you have to remember that the Public Works general includes Teamsters and non-represented staff.
Right, but the table in the lower right is blended, non-represented and Teamsters. We'll talk a little bit about each of those separately. So and actually to that, there's my lead-in. So for, let's dive into the non-represented data just a little bit more. So here, this is only the non-represented, and so you can see what that looks like now by department. There are significantly more non-represented jobs, so looking at it this way, the impact of the Teamsters jobs isn't as shown as much or shows up as much, but we did want you to be able to see this separated. And I'll just pause to see if anyone has any questions about that. Okay. And then just a different way to look at the information or think about the information. This is still just the non-represented jobs. And here we're looking at those jobs, again, kind of comparing back to market and identifying the percent or number of jobs that we would consider to be within market. And so that's sort of plus or minus five percent of the market reference point, the sixtieth percentile. And that is the green wedge on the chart. So that's almost sixty percent of the jobs, and it's thirty-nine jobs, the non-represented jobs. And then the pink wedge, that's about thirty percent of the jobs, twenty jobs. Those are jobs that are between six to ten percent under market. And then that blue wedge, the remaining jobs, those are jobs that are more than ten percent under market, and we have eight jobs in that situation, or twelve percent of the whole. So broadly, you know, the non-represented jobs, you have a strong majority that are within market, and then, you know, a smaller number that are below market.
Hey, Shannon, it's really small on our screen. Can you put it in presentation mode? Because we can see like the upcoming slides too.
Yeah, you bet. Sorry about that. Let's see. I want to, just give me a moment, and I will. I just needed show ribbon. I just needed that to show up. Let's see if this works.
That's better. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Okay. Now that you can see the chart, any questions about that? Okay. All right, then what I'd like to do now is move into some implementation options for your consideration. So we've identified that, you know, there are some jobs that are under market. However, our first implementation option is to simply apply a COLA, cost of living adjustment, to the overall pay range structure. So this means that in essence, that, you know, everyone in the non-represented group would receive a pay increase of approximately two-point-four-four percent with this particular option. And the dollar amount for that is a little more than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and that is with associated benefits costs included in that amount. So option one is a COLA adjustment. Now, option two is a COLA plus a market adjustment for some jobs. So let me explain this. In this option, we would apply the COLA first, and then adjust jobs that are below ninety-five percent of market. So they're outside of that kind of minus five percent of market, and move them up to ninety-five percent of market. So look at the jobs that are below market and move them up to ninety-five percent of market.
I have a quick question about option two, where it says three-point-four percent. Is that the total overall increase, or are you proposing a higher COLA? Or does the COLA stay at two-point-four percent?
The COLA would still be two-point-four-four, and then it's overall would be three-point-four.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, with the benefits, with trying to, again, compare apples to apples there and with the loaded additional benefits. And so in option two, it would be about eighty-eight thousand dollars for the market adjustments. And we're talking about sixteen jobs that potentially could see that grade change that would account for that market adjustment. So we're talking about sixteen jobs there in both option two and in option three. So option three is a little different from option two, same concept, where we're applying the COLA first and then adjusting jobs that are under market. And then adjusting jobs that are under market. Um, in, in option three, we would adjust those jobs up to one hundred percent of market. So up to the sixtieth percentile. And so the cost for that is, uh, is more, it's four hundred and four thousand, four and five. Um, again, with benefits and the market adjustment part of that is, uh, almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on option three. So I just wanna pause there. And I'm just waiting, just to see if anyone has any questions. Also, I'll say just to, as far as, just to make it clear for our assumptions here. We are looking at a market reference point at the sixtieth percentile. Um, again, for options two and three, uh, we'd only change job grades for those jobs that are under market. And that's sixteen jobs. And when we calculate the numbers out, we are. Looking at, you know, maintaining employees' place and range. So when we model the dollars here. If someone is in, you know, step three. Right now, then they would stay in step three, if even though they're the, the grade or, or range for their job might change. Their actual step placement would remain the same. So any questions about those three options? Then, um. We do have, uh, the mayor's recommendation, uh, also for your consideration. Um, which would be option two. The COLA plus the job grade change up to ninety-five percent of market. Um, this particular option would, you know, bring all of the non-represented jobs, again, under market to within five percent of market. And if this were implemented, uh, it would bring the overall range midpoint for all of the non-rep jobs. Up to, on average, ninety-nine percent of market. And then you'll see at the bottom of the screen, um, the fund allocation for that and how much is going to the general fund overall. And then kind of the breakout of that in the chart. Any either questions or Anya, if you have any additional comments or thoughts?
I got one other question on, on your, uh. Uh, option three. And the COLA plus the job grade to a hundred percent of market, is that hundred, is that even for people that are already at ninety-five percent? Cause you said sixteen jobs, that would be more than sixteen jobs if you did option three to bring all to a hundred percent.
Um, correct. So it's, it's only those that are under ninety-five percent of market. Either option two or three.
So option three is if they're at ninety-five percent or plus or minus five percent of market. Where they're staying there just with the COLA.
Correct.
So, our idea with doing the COLA first is to make sure everyone sees an increase. And then looking at the market data to see how far off we are. And I will say, like, there are fifty-two jobs that are underneath a hundred percent of the market. The sixteen jobs that we're proposing that we adjust are just the ones that are outside of that five percent plus or minus of the market. And so the option three is bringing those sixteen jobs to that hundred percent. Um, where you're leaving some of those other, those other fifty-two or so jobs, like still in that range of ninety-five and a hundred. Um, and option two is really just bringing them to the next step that gets them over the five percent kind of jump within the. So it's really like a one or two range increase for most of these positions. So there's some like equity.
Other questions or thoughts?
So does the law enforcement, by bringing that up by fourteen percent, is that via a new contract or is that just a?
Non, non-represented.
Non-represented.
It's a non-represented.
Okay. When is the representative contract up?
Um, end of next year at least.
So this would be like the commander, chief, deputy chief, their slots.
So, and sorry for the last question I asked on the. On, on number three, we're not bringing anybody from that's within the five percent of a, of a hundred percent of market up with this. With those fifty-two that are at, at or below five percent. Uh, next year, are we, are they going to be below the five percent? We're going to be talking about this again?
You're gonna talk about it every year because as we do three point four, the next city's doing five. You'll never get ahead of this.
I understand that.
You're the only way you will get ahead of this if we do like seventy percent.
I'm, I'm, I'm just looking at probably, I'm looking at the possibility of a option four where we bring everybody a hundred percent of the market.
Um. I mean, I did, uh, do some calculation for the mayor this morning. He's like, well, why do we keep falling behind if we're aiming for the sixtieth? And I think it has to do with the ninety percent method that we have for giving a COLA. Because other, most other jurisdictions are giving a hundred percent of COLA. And so I look, I did a three-year look back from our last salary study when we brought everyone up. And the rate we were providing our cost of living increase versus the CPI a hundred percent. We are in like a four and a half percent deficit. And so when you look at like our total statistic that we're at ninety-fifth percentile for on all non-represented positions. There's your hundred percent of CPI right there. So if you give a two point four four to answer your question, that's ninety percent, that's the ninetieth of the CPI for this year. Then we will fa- keep falling behind, um, potentially. Uh, I did, I am part of like a HR group and they've been sending out salary, um, you know, inquiries about who's doing CPI. And about forty or so cities responded throughout the state and the average is about a three percent CPI for twenty-twenty-six. Which is actually above the cost of living. Cost of living is like two point seven. And so what I learned from some of the responses is that some people are using different methods. They're not only looking at a hundred percent of CPI, but they're also doing a three-year look back. And, you know, three years ago, we hit like a nine or ten CPI. And so some cities are giving a five point five this year. I think that when we are going through this mayor's recommendation, it's because of our current budget situation. We want to be mindful of what funds are currently available. Will we be in this situation in a couple of years if we do this again? Probably. So I think it's a tough decision on where council wants to be and where they've aimed for and not losing that traction. Uh, because then in a couple of years, we'll just, um, be paying more potentially.
Ryan has his hand up.
Brian? Yeah, so, um, I guess I'll start by saying, you know, I. I definitely want to recognize the hard work of all the, the employees of the city and. Look at, you know, what it, what their costs of living are. But I, I keep going back to the fact, you know, looking at our, our budget situation and where we're, which direction we're trying to go. I'm struggling with the fact that, you know, it, it sounds like we're sitting here talking about increasing our expenses. And so I'm, I'm, I have to wonder, you know, are these increases sort of a Band-Aid? And eventually we're, you know, in trying to get ahead of where we are relative to other cities, are we going to find ourselves in a position where? We know, we're cutting positions. Is there a path forward where? Maybe we, we dial back the increases to preserve positions and is that a better strategy? And I don't know the answer, but I want to make sure we're not, you know, shooting ourselves in the foot down the road. Having to let people go because we over, um, I don't want to say overcompensate it because again. Con- this compensation I feel is deserved, but I, I want to make sure we can afford it and sustain it.
I will say that if we don't pay our employees to the market, then we will lose them. Um, there are plenty of jurisdictions looking for talented people and I had to say to say it, but like Stevens, we have a lot of talented people here. Um, and so I'm not saying that they will leave necessarily just because of salaries, but I think you run that risk of employee retention and turnover rates. You know, increasing.
Don't we run that risk anyway if we exceed our means and can't pay them, you know, in a year or two? Because like the, the costs of living increases are just, it's, you know, death by a thousand cuts. I, I guess it's. Which, which way leads to that outcome of us losing people faster?
I guess it's kind of interesting. I mean, you read in the newspaper, you got Linwood, you got Edmonds, you've got Everett potentially. Uh, jurisdictions that are deeply in financial hurt. I, I mean, I, I would hope our employees wouldn't go to work for Linwood. So I guess, you know, the balancing act is, uh, we're in kind of unique times, I guess, but. At the same time, I don't know as though. I think there's a quality of life working in Lake Stevens. I hope that the employees recognize that, uh, and. I, I mean, based on my general knowledge of the work environment. I, it wouldn't seem to me that we would have a lot of folks immediately jumped ship over three or four percent because of. Competing cities are in way worse shape than we are. So I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, again, I'm just gathering my information from the newspaper, but. You know, Linwood is not a small city, um. Edmonds is not a small city, Everett, who knows where that's going? I mean, they've been running deficits for a number of years. So, I don't, maybe I'm missing something here. I just, I don't, I don't see, I mean, I would hope our employees just don't get up and leave over three or four percent. We gotta be able to afford what we can afford.
And I, I agree. I don't know that they'll leave over three or four percent, but I think every decision and like is going to ripple effect in, in three years. If we're falling further and further behind.
Well, I get that, but.
That could be a reason.
I mean, we're trying to predict the future then and that's, I mean, I'm not very good at that and I don't know who is, so.
Um, Shannon, do you mind going to the next slide?
Oh wait, maybe I got one more question on this slide. So we see in general is twenty-nine point two or. What they, what the mayor is asking for, twenty-nine point two percent of it coming out of general. Not all law enforcement was coming out of general.
So we, all those are different departments and so the general fund number is actually like sixty-six point seven. That's why we put it up at the, right about that. And I will say actually the allocation numbers, um, have been updated. And Barbara, I don't know if you want to speak to that now or. This is what we had at the time when we were making this presentation, so.
Yeah, um, I have actually, uh, done some reallocation, uh, into the permit fund. I think we talked about that previously where we looked at some administrative, uh, salaries and, um, looked at, uh, adding the permit. Um, fund as a separate division and how the FTE is going into that, um, with the. Planning and building community development department, um, basically turned that into its almost its own department. And so allocating some of the finance, IT, HR, some of those in there. Um, it does reallocate some of these out of, um, the other funds or out of the other departments and then into that. Separate restricted fund. Um, in the past, we've been really conservative with that as restricted funds. But thinking of it more holistically, if it were a district on its own, it would have to pay for its own finance. It would have to pay for its own IT. It would have to pay for its own HR stuff. And so, um, we basically are just allocating, um, based on the same percentages that we would for everything else. For, um, FTEs, for revenues, for expenditures, for everything going on in that department. So these are off a little bit. Um, there is a bit more going into permits, but we do need to keep looking at the, um, allocation and, and tweaking it a little bit. Um, uh, the further I go into it, the more I open worms, I have cans of worms constantly. Um, and so I'm constantly reevaluating how we're doing this so we can do it better. So, um, these numbers are not exactly accurate. Um, but, um. We, we just got, I just learned this information this morning, so it's not into my presentation. I don't have any of that information in my spreadsheets yet. Um, we haven't put vacations, but they're a little different at this point.
Still, if we went with the mayor's recommendation, we're basically sixty-six point seven percent of the, out of the hit to the general fund.
I would say the general funds. So the permit fund is one of the restricted funds and those we don't usually consider out of the general fund. So, um, it would, uh, again, I don't know exactly what the dollar amount is right now, but, um, it'll be, it'll be less than that. Um, I think planning, community development there, uh, statistically, eighty-four percent of their, uh, time is through permits. And so, um, eighty-four percent of their FTEs, communication, all of that, I believe came to about. I, I'm gonna have to go back and look, five percent maybe, um. So it would, it would definitely allocate it a little bit differently. I might even have it open to see what that looks like.
But it will have less of a general fund impact.
Mm-hmm.
Because we've reallocated, so it'd be less than this number.
Yeah, but as I mentioned, we need to be careful with our allocations because there's only so much permit funding coming in. You want the same amount going out and, um, year over year, it is still more than what we're taking in. Which means our other reserve funds are then going to compensate the permit fund as well, so.
Very, thank you.
You have another slide on here.
Yeah, any other questions on this at the moment?
There was a question a few weeks ago about how our benefits compare to other cities and I was able to pull some survey data for that from AWC survey. So I wanted to put a slide in for you so you could see, um, the medical dental vision, the average. So I looked at the cities that we, um, identified in the survey. Um, and this, ten of them responded to the survey, to this part of the survey. And so out of those ten cities, the average, um, that the employer pays for, for medical dental vision is ninety-eight percent for employee and ninety-four percent for family. Um, so there are a few cities that pay like a ninety percent of employee, um, depending on the plan or an eighty percent. Um, but I will say that half of the cities that we looked at have the same split as us or a little bit better. There was one city that offered a better split, which they paid ninety-seven percent of the family. Um, and then here's some holiday data, um. Uh, the average is twelve point four, Lake Stevens is at thirteen. It's unsure in the survey whether they, all the cities included, like personal holidays and things, but we did. So, uh, it's not a hundred percent reliable in my opinion, but vacation, we're doing pretty well. This is looking at, I pulled year two data, so as if they're a second year employee with what vacation they get per year. And we're at one hundred and twelve and, um, the rest of those cities are at ninety-nine point six. Uh, for the twenty-twelve, twenty-five percent COLA, the average COLA was four percent across those cities. And we off, and we provided a three point two four. So we were a little less last year on that. And then for the FSA, it's not an average, it's a number. So out of the ten cities, nine of them offered an FSA and we do not. Um, and then longevity pay, only three of them offer longevity pay for non-represented and we are one of them. And the, the rates are pretty variable. Just wanted to give you that. So you had that for food for thought since that, so that was requested last meeting.
What is longevity pay?
Longevity pay is if you're here for over five years, then you get a percentage, um, tacked onto your salary for retention. Uh, we modeled it, I think we changed our model a few years ago to mirror what the police, um, guild was getting. And so I don't have the rates in front of me, but I believe the first like five years is that two percent. And then it goes incrementally up, um, at ten and fifteen years of employment and twenty.
So we looked at the FSA, right?
We did.
So that was, that's an interesting benefit that we could throw in the mix relatively cheap. Uh, that could provide some tax savings for our folks. I think we were what, fifteen hundred dollars to implement that program?
Sure, off of my head.
Sorry, uh, it was, it was our staff kind of did it. Um, um, the, um, HR specialist and the finance manager kind of went together and, and. Pulled all of the information on the FSA and I think there's a few different, um, programs with the FSA. One is just for childcare and that one is similar to what we've had in the past, um, through, uh, AFLAC. Um, and I don't think there was any cost to the city on that one. That one is a pay as you go for, um, employees. Then there's additional ones where you can do some kind of medical. There are some risks involved with those, um, the, um. There are some risks involved with those. Um, the um. Those you actually, we put in the funding or we allocate funding into basically a bank. And then say, yes, they can utilize this amount uh for medical. And then monthly, we take deductions from their pay and put it into the bank. But they are able to pull more out than we put in and, or more than they put in. And then if they do separate from the city, we don't have any recourse to get that money back. Um, and then on the other hand of that, it's slightly risky for the employees as well because it's a use it or lose it. And so if they don't use it by the end of the year, then they lose it and we get that money and the city keeps that money. And so it's a little, a little odd where that's how you actually pay for the program. The program, there's a cost to the, running the program for that one. And that's how this, they, they say that the city could pay for the program is with the losses from the employees and. So there's a lot of different ones we're looking at, but.
But, and as I remember right, uh, the administrative cost to set that up was only fifteen hundred for the city.
I think so.
Yeah. So it's something that, that could be a good benefit to add on that is super low cost for the city. But yet would provide some great tax benefits for our folks.
I know we would have to administer that too internally. They don't, they don't administer it for us. So it'd be more, more work as well.
I'm just curious about this longevity pay deal. You said there's only three cities that offer this and we're one of them. How many employees do we have that are over five years, have been with the city over five years?
I don't off the top of my head, but we could find out.
It's gonna take me a little bit. You want to put it in our list?
Just guessing seventy percent?
No.
No?
No.
No, I don't think so.
Is it under half?
Yes.
I would say.
You're asking great questions.
I just, I mean, that seems to me to be a real kicker. You're, for longevity purposes, if you're, if you're five years, every year you get a. Bonus in addition to your COLA, right?
It's basically attached to your salary. So it's like every pay, you're getting like a two percent addition on top of your base.
And yet we're one of the few that offer that?
For nonrepresented, yes. It's very common and, you know, your police and other like union bargaining agreements.
Is that longevity included in the percentile?
No.
It's not?
No.
Yeah.
Because it's.
So the percentile of ninety five percent or a hundred percent is blind to that for the employees that received it?
Yeah, that's correct.
So why is that not included in the percentile? That's part of a salary.
It seems like that, no, it's an addition, so.
It's not part, the, the salary is based off of base pay.
Got it. It's actually a percentile of base pay, so it's a bonus.
So for some of our employees, then they actually, that number is not necessarily as low as it could, as it appears to be.
Yeah, potentially.
It's not necessarily what?
As low as we think it is because they're actually getting something that's not modeled.
Yeah.
For example, the five year employee, yeah, might be at ninety five percent, but they've been here for five years plus and now they're getting that two percent. So they're actually at ninety seven, not ninety five. It probably doesn't come up. I mean, the, the total for.
It varies.
Number, option two, what was two was three hundred thousand, so it's probably not substantial number. But when we're talking of potential hard cuts of one or two million dollars. We may not have that.
So I can tell you that our um, our rates are uh for non reps. And I believe this matches the guild and the Teamsters is slightly different still. Um, for at five years, there's a two percent, at ten years, it goes to four percent. At fifteen years, it goes to five percent, twenty years, it's seven percent, and thirty years, it's nine percent.
So what you're saying, Jean has to go here really soon.
And how many?
Do you want that though?
Remind me how many steps employees here have?
Seven.
Thanks.
For the most part.
Non reps, most have seven.
Thank you.
So the salary survey then was ba- just so I understand this, it was based off of an employee that's here for one year?
It's off of the base pay of the midpoint of the range of our salary schedule. So it's not based off a specific employee.
It's off the value of the job as opposed, because the individual employee pay can, can fall sort of in a range above that, below that.
Okay, what's the tenure then of a step four employee?
Typically, it's supposed to be four years. That's how it's designed. However, our hiring range is between one and three typically. And then if they get hired above range three, they have to get additional approvals from HR and the city administrator.
Okay, so I'm curious then, not that I'm asking for more work, what would it look like if we changed that benchmark to step five?
Which benchmark?
The benchmark of our percentages, would that ninety five then go way up? Because the.
Because they're.
Because the employees are getting the two percent. I'm just, I'm just curious.
So there are um.
You follow me?
Thirty. There are thirty two total employees. That's, doesn't include, just non reps. This is like including police, which quite a few of those are police. Um, that just as a quick look uh that are o- over five years of employment.
I know that's in the weeds a little, but that really could influence how we decide which option we're taking because. Well, I think we already explained that.
But, but I guess the question would be is your comparable cities, are they at the midpoint or are they at step five?
That's exactly it.
Right? So then your numbers aren't right.
I, so that's, that's a question. So what, what are our comparables? Do you, did you look into that at all? Where they are in their step process?
Shannon?
Yeah, so, so we can, we looked at the. The, the market range for each job at the different comparables and in our published survey sources, so all the data sources. And we're comparing back the market reference point at the sixtieth percentile is whatever that, that sort of similar position is in their range. And then we're comparing that to the midpoint of your range. And Kathy, you just came off mute. I don't know if you've got more to add there.
Uh, yeah, first of all, it looks like there's about thirteen nonrep employees that are, have over five years. And then, yeah, so we calculate um the midpoint of whatever comparable we're using. We calculate their midpoint regardless of what step it is and then compare that, plus the sixtieth percentile. So, and then compare that. So it's not like we're necessarily comparing step four to step five. That helps.
I guess my question wasn't necessarily steps. Is it, are we comparing tenure to tenure? Is it apples to apples? So whether it's a step four or step five and ever were a step four, is the tenure, whatever that, that model looked at, was that consistent? I guess that's a better way to ask my question.
Yeah, we're comparing like range to range as opposed to employee to employee.
Or step by step.
Hmm.
Because not every city has like a five step system or a seven step system. So they're looking at the minimum and the maximum, and then they're taking the midpoint of that range. That's the midpoint that we're looking at, the very middle. So it might not line up at every step the same way.
With, with that tenure means.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Kathy, you said there were fifteen.
Thirteen.
Non thirteen, fifteen?
About thirteen.
Thirteen. Non rep.
And I'd have to see what those thirteen, if those were even part of the sixteen jobs that we're recommending to adjust to. But I can do that.
I was gonna say, we can look into that more. I sho- I showed, I showed twenty three that as of uh. Twenty twenty six will have five years or more. So twenty three. We'll have, um, we have, I believe it looks like we're gonna have about uh thirteen of those will have the two percent. Either have it or will have it in twenty twenty six. And then nine that are above the um ten years or more.
So it affects very few of our staff, the longevity at this point.
I believe that's all we have related to the, the non-represented uh group. The rest of our, our information is related to the Teamsters positions.
So we will be ready for executive session. Unless there's any questions about it.
Clerk Extraordinaire is letting me into the meeting. She's got power.
Ryan, do you have your hand up?
Yes, that was me. Thank you.
Okay.
I need to find my uh.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, it says council retreat, but you know, council discussion. Um, so let's jump in here.
I just want to say out loud, I'm looking at the packet on my phone. I'm not like texting my friend or.
We see your, the reflection.
Oh, good. You can check me, you can check me.
Uh, okay, appreciate that. Um, so um in the uh packet I had, in the agenda packet I had put in there. That we were going to kind of go over revenue strategies, cost allocation, citywide cost reductions and uh capital. But I didn't really feel like this was, the capital portion is as pertinent to our current conversations about general funds. So um I left that out. So um I just want to kind of mention that we can uh bring that back. I think um Erin and his team did a great job uh during the last uh presentation on the thirtieth, going over all the capital stuff. I was basically just going to bring it back into more summarized uh product for you so I can do that um at a later date, but. Um, so the mayor's priorities have not changed, looking at maintaining levels of service where possible and looking at innovation. So jumping right into uh revenue strategies. So um, some of the things that we're looking at doing, and we've kind of talked about some of them. Um, the pandemic recovery fund, so this was um ARPA funding that um we were able to. Convert into unrestricted funding um through the grant process. So um we had a number of projects that were um budgeted in the pandemic recovery funds. Um, there were a few parks and a couple of other things in there that we are actually redistributing the expenses into capital project funds. So this opens up our unrestricted funds that we can put back into the general fund. It is a one-time um insertion of cash, but it is approximately one point two million dollars. So the projects that are going um that were slated in those funds have been moved into the other capital project funds. And are in the capital project budget over the next few years. So nothing is actually ta- being taken out. It's just moving into capital project funds. Um, the next thing is the property tax, which we have discussed. Um, so we are redistributing um the um allocation between the street and the general fund. And I do have a slide on that a little bit later, but that does add uh about nine hundred and forty thousand dollars to um the general fund annually. And again, we will continue looking at this and making sure this isn't going to affect the street fund uh negatively as we go through. But we have been talking about doing the redistribution for a number of years, trying to make the street more, um, street fund more sustainable on its own. And uh utilizing less of the um property tax. Um, interest earnings, we've talked about this a couple of times and there was some challenges with sweeping interest. Um, but this allows, um, so if we sweep it from the allowable funds, this is our um internal service funds. And so that's only going to be the internal service funds that our general fund provides money to. And so it won't be the um, the public works fund. It won't be um the IT fund because multiple funding sources go into those. And so we could try to pull the amount that came from the general fund um funding and push it back into the general fund. But that's not going to be really uh very easy to do um without some additional software and some stuff. But um, so in twenty twenty five, so the, I did include like twenty twenty five, what we're going to do. Um, we may be able to redistribute the um capital project or the money from the pandemic recovery fund in twenty twenty five versus waiting until twenty twenty six. We were able to do that, but at this point it's in the budget as happening in twenty twenty six. So that's why you'll see it here. So sweeping the interest from um the um, uh, the other funds. So that would be the um police fund, the um uh parks. And from the community development vehicle fund, if we sweep the interest from those, it's about hundred fifteen thousand dollars from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five. So during those big interest years, um, and then ongoing, it's about ten thousand dollars a year that would go to uh general fund. Couple other big things that we've talked about that we are in the process of doing is initiating credit card fees. Um, council did pass the resolution allowing us to do that starting January one. Um, our credit card fees, I basically just have the revenue set the same as the um expenditures right now. So it just um recoups that. Technology fees, I lost my placeholder of what uh we thought those were going to be. But I, I pulled um the stuff from Carol's and, and Christie's and it, and I believe it was about fifteen, twenty. And then we have some additional ones. So I have twenty five in here, but I need to relook at what that is. Um, and those actually go um into the IT fund. But the allocations come from the general street and stormwater funds into those funds based on um usage of different softwares and things. The next couple I have in here, um, wanted to chat about a little bit. Um, one is. One is the utility tax, and I have additional slide on this. So utility tax for the city stormwater utility. If we did this, it would add about $560,000 per year into the general fund. And then the sales tax, we talked about imposing the council manic public safety sales tax, and I have a little bit of information on that one. And then I did want to put in here that so right now for community development salaries and benefits and operating costs. They are booked or the expense is actually caught in the general fund. And then we do a JV to move cash from the permit fund into the general fund to cover those costs. We're actually changing how we do that. And we're actually just gonna actually, we're just moving the funding or the actual expenditures. Adding salary benefit lines in the permit fund so that Russ's team can better follow those and track those costs. What does it cost coming in, going out? And so it will eliminate a $2 million revenue into the general operating fund as we transfer that from one fund into the other. So I added that on there. So the estimated increase in the revenues for 2026 are approximately 1.1 million. So about a 6% increase in the base on these. So looking at the utility tax, I know council is absolutely against imposing additional taxes on citizens right now. I know that's, that's where you guys are feeling right now. So we, as the actual stormwater utility, we don't have to pass those costs on to the residents. We don't have to pass those on to the rate payers. We can absorb those internally. So we have had discussions about, we could impose the tax on the stormwater. If we did, it's about 1% or $50,000 per 1%, a little bit more than that, 52,000. If we impose a 10% utility tax and absorb that, the stormwater fund can absorb that for now. So what we would do is look at this year over year. Where are we? How is this affecting our capital projects? How is this affecting the stormwater fund? And discuss in the future years if that was something that council wanted to move forward and pass on to residents. But at this point, the recommendation would just be to absorb this through our stormwater fund to assist the general fund.
Barb, where would that show up for citizens on their, on their water?
It wouldn't. If we're not increasing rates or we're not increasing fees or taxes, we do have to give them notice, just like we would if we're sending out to anyone. So we would have to send out notice to the residents via the however we do it, normal social media through our website, that kind of thing, notifying them that we are imposing a tax on our utility.
And you say that would have an impact on stormwater coming for the next. There's surplus of stormwater. If we did that for three years.
So we actually, the surplus we put from the stormwater operations fund into the capital fund each year and taking out the debt each year is anywhere from 1.2 to 1.7 million dollars going towards the, the the surplus for capital projects. And so going forward, looking at the capital projects that we have moving forward. It is sustainable at this level for a number of years. If we were looking to take the entire 1.7, that's not gonna, obviously, we're not going to get anything done. And we have a lot of big projects coming up with bridges and culverts and things. And so yes, we're looking at what this would look like over past that point.
Are we also looking at a increase in the stormwater the next year?
I think though, we actually were discussing this of what we would do and how we would actually propose the normal rate increase with this involved or without it. And so I believe we actually have money in the budget to do that rate study to help us to understand the effect of all of this.
I guess potentially, potentially it could be higher.
It could potentially be higher based on capital projects and needs anyway, but yeah.
As far as taking the money back out to the general fund, it could be higher than what you're.
You could go higher.
So yeah, for the rate starting in 2027. Yep.
Can I weigh in? Okay, so I think, I think Director Stevens has done a great job evaluating capital projects and the impact and trying to be reasonable with this. There are some things we don't know. Okay, so we're doing this, this pipe condition inventory across the city. So we're trying to understand the condition of our infrastructure. And we've got a good snapshot. We're around a third to halfway through that. We have a lot of aging corrugated metal pipe. If you, if, if it tends to rust and the bottom falls out. Over time, that needs to be replaced over the next several years or decade. We don't have a comprehensive cost estimate for that. That's going to go into our rate analysis next year. We'll have a better scope on that. The other thing is we have aging equipment. Sweeper that you see run every day, we run our sweeper at basically every business day is nearing the end of its useful life and needs to be replaced. That will come as part of the rate analysis as well. For now, Barb and I have, we've looked at the numbers. This seems as it seems like a short term fix and will be incorporated into that rate analysis at the time.
Any additional questions on that right now? It works. Mine's always on. Okay, so the next thing is the property or the public safety sales tax, which I know you guys have had a number of presentations on. Deputy chief has brought some information along with the police operations manager. So this is the 0.1% sales tax, so the 1/10 of a percent. This is can be done councilmanically. This is included in the budget forecast right now for 2026, as is the utility tax. So if imposed in April 2026, we start receipts in June, that gives us half of a year of sales tax, so about $375,000. But lately, there have been some challenges arising that I will invite Mayor Gailey to discuss.
Yeah, so I've talked about it with a couple of you. So what's happening is several cities, counties have passed this sales tax already. And then in order to main, to have the sales tax, you have to prove to essentially the state through the CJTC that you are complying with the law that was passed on this public safety tax. Sent a bill, whatever it was, 50, whatever. So those requirements are pretty loose in what the legislature did. And so the, so it goes to CJTC and CJTC is is holding a very, very high standard on their interpretation of the law. So for example, King County, who has already passed this, received a 13-page memo from CJTC outlining to them why they were not in compliance with the law. And how if they don't come into compliance with the law within 180 days, the Department of Revenue will hold back $180,000 of their sales tax revenue till they are compliant.
A month.
A month. City of Kent was just recently denied as well with a similar letter. So there's some discussion going on of, oh, what does that mean? And so to go even deeper into this, in talking with Jeff, the chief, like in order for us to comply with what he read within that memo, it's going to take a deep dive and a lot of changes to policies. Okay, but then the other side of that, and I confirm this with the sheriff. The other side of that is if you change those policies, you're now out of WASPAC accreditation, federal accreditation for your cities because you're not following federal law. So now you lose the accreditation benefits that you have. So there's a lot of movement right now. And a need to go to the governor's office and say, what are we doing? AWC is asking for that input. We're giving that input. But there's a lot of conflicting issues with this sales tax right now. And can we pass it? Yeah. Do we even? Like, uh, there's just a lot of unknowns with if we do this tax.
And remind me, we can, we can talk about passing the tax. It doesn't have to be around budget season. It can be any time between now and the end of 2027. Okay.
Yeah. So I think my recommendation is if you want to push this, if you want to go with this tax, we need to first get compliant. Whatever that means. And then pass the tax. Cause, cause what's happening now is you have King County and Kent who've already passed the tax. And now you're going to have, well, are we ever going to be compliant?
Yeah, I feel really uncomfortable.
Totally.
Moving forward in that kind of an environment.
Yeah. So we need to really assess if we can become compliant without losing accreditation.
So basically what we're saying right now is we need to take this out of our 2026 budget.
Yes. We're not going to get compliant.
By April?
Compliant in eight weeks.
Well, you're not going to, you gotta get compliant by, you gotta get, be compliant by April if we oppose this in April.
Right. But we need to know whether we're compliant or not. We need to know if this can be in the budget or not. Be by within the next.
I think, I think that we could safely say if we can find compliance, a level of compliance that the state would take, that we could keep it in the budget. If it's, if it's an unknown, like kind of right now, like we don't. We can't.
Right. I, I, yeah, personally, I feel like.
The budget doesn't have it inked out against our will.
Yeah.
Ryan's got us.
Go ahead, Ryan.
I was just curious, Barb, you said this can be council manic. So if we decide we're going to hold off on this and kind of see where the dust settles in terms of compliance, does that give us an opportunity to put this forward to the citizens and get some input that way on it?
That is definitely up to you.
I don't, I'd have to look at the law if it matters, if the citizens approve this and it's not councilmatic, do you still have to comply with the law?
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
I think you do.
Okay, I'm thinking more even just in terms of, you know, their input, because it's another tax.
So, so either way, you come into compliance and you put your department in jeopardy before you don't.
So was that, I guess it seems like that was the intent of the legislation was to complicate that.
I would, I, I don't. To venture into the brains of what goes on in Olympia.
Mayor, what's our police chief's sense?
So we're right now evaluating it. Can we get there? That's where we're at. But one of the problems you have is that you have to create agreements with a lot of other agencies to not comply with federal law.
Right. Which, which then causes you to have problems with federal grants.
Right. So then do you lose that money?
Yeah. So it's, it's it's, it's a tough case. And probably, I think there's going to be some interaction between the state of Washington and the feds over the next three to four months. And maybe that might iron some of this out. So I think probably waiting to see how this conflict between the state of Washington and the federal government on a number of issues kind of settles out that death settles. Will give us a better picture of whether we can go into this without risking either state or federal funds.
So, so I would suggest we keep it in it on a couple of reasons why. One, what Greg just talked about. Two, you have a short session, January to March, that the legislature needs to recognize this problem and make changes to the Keep Washington Working Act so that so that this can be enacted. As of right now, I don't see how it can be. So I would suggest we keep it in, all that keeps within the April timeframe to impose, just for planning purposes.
When you say keep it in, we're not, we, we wouldn't vote on, we wouldn't vote on passing it though, until we know.
Not with it. No, you wouldn't vote on, you wouldn't want to vote it until you know that you can comply with it, I think at this point.
Okay, that I wanted to.
But it would be a vote, you know, hope. I hate to do a course of action by hope, but.
It'd be a revenue placeholder.
Is a placeholder.
It's a placeholder to see what, what, what shakes out between the federal government, the state and the legislative session. And then you could, you could do a councilmatic before the April timeframe to start collecting in June.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think we're going to go over at 8 o'clock.
I would agree with you.
You know, another part of the equation we haven't talked about yet is whether we would actually impose another tax right now. I mean, what, what the state just did. And where our citizens are at right now, it's like, wow, really? We, you know, they're taking taking a lot of comfort out of doing any kind of a councilmatic type.
Yep.
Tax increase to our citizens right now.
And, and I do not disagree with you. Having said that, if we want to keep cops, we got to pay for it.
I agree with that too.
Ryan's got us.
Ryan.
Sorry, I might be a little behind because I'm virtual. So are, are we saying that we expect to have resolution on the compliance issue before we pass our budget?
No.
No.
Okay. I mean, I, again, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but then I'm I'm hesitant to put something in there that, you know, I guess, so what happens? Like when it comes time to pass the budget, we just say, okay, we don't know the answer and we knock off another $800,000 from whatever budget we pass. Is that kind of what we're saying?
Well, it's three, it'd be 375 for this coming budget here because we wouldn't start collecting until June.
Okay. But I mean, either, either way, if we don't have an answer, then I mean, is that effectively what we'd have to do is you know, just knock it off at the time of passing the budget ordinance?
Yep, you'd have to do a budget adjustment in June and take that revenue portion expectation out.
Why wouldn't we do the opposite and not include it in the budget and then do an adjustment when we know for sure that, if we know for sure that we're going to have it?
We could go that route as well. Yeah.
I guess I, I would agree with Councilman Donahue. I feel really uncomfortable having a, a revenue placeholder with the current budget forecast that we have now.
Yeah. I can support that as well. Okay, good discussion on the sales tax. We all understand the the issues with that. How much longer you want to go, Barb?
Um, we still have expense strategies, including colas and medical dental. Forecast, I'm going to say at least 15, 20 minutes.
Does council care without, or you want to end it at 8?
I think we need to keep going, don't we?
All right, let's do it.
Okay.
Do we need to motion?
It's a workshop though.
It's workshop, we're good.
Okay, property tax. So we had talked about property tax a little bit. So just give you a kind of a brief intro into what's coming up on this. So the assessed values increased by five and a half percent. The estimated levy for 2026 is 6.7 million. The levy rate is decreasing to 0.69. We did redistribute the property tax, as I mentioned, changing the allocation from the street fund to the general fund. This is approximately a 2.1% increase overall. This includes the 1% regular levy increase. The prior year's levy was 6.6, I believe, or 6.6 million. And so you would think 1% is actually 66,000, but it's actually the lower of either 1% of the highest lawful levy or 1% of the prior levy. And so it's actually 1% increase. And then the change between what is actually levied and the highest lawful 1% increase. And so it's only $32,000 that the 1% increases us this year. And then new construction is 68,000 and refunds are 38. And so I put in here the quick chart that shows you if you're, if you had a half million dollar home in 2025, your overall tax for the year was $4,348. That's the lower chart and the city's portion of that is the really small on my screen and. um, is the, um, really small on my screen and, uh, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And then, uh, with the, if you actually increase by that five point, uh, five percent, it would then increase you to five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and your increased tax would be, uh, seven dollars. The city portion of the tax would be seven dollars. So, so that's the property tax. Um, go through this every year, but just giving you a quick heads up on what that looks like.
It strikes me as kind of strange that it wasn't that long ago that we were doing a property tax of two hundred thousand dollars on a home instead of five hundred thousand.
I know. Well, I keep the hundred thousand in there because it's easy for people to say, my house is seven hundred, so you just multiply that by seven, but, but.
To do this chart at two hundred thousand.
And then I heard, we don't have two hundred thousand dollar homes here. So and I said, okay, we'll go to five and a million. We'll just try to get it a little closer. Um, so looking at our expense strategy, so a number of these, we were already, um, obviously implemented the vacant positions. So we still have eight positions and two reclassifications remaining on hold. Um, there were a couple of positions that, uh, we did go ahead and send forward, including the engineer, um, and then, uh, the civil plans reviewer. Uh, we've also, um, done the promotion for the deputy chief and I believe they have gone through their interviews and have, uh, the backfill for the commissioner, but it's not, um, effective until January first. And so they're looking at backfilling their kind of backfill, 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 but they're actually just occurring January first. And so they're already working through all those. So, um, total of about seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, savings for 2025. Um, there is a roll forward, um, savings into 2026 based on things like step increases and, um, longevity, some of those things as we've kind of started talking about that actually do push forward. Um, we did redistribute, uh, the administrative overhead, as I mentioned, uh, distributing uh, share of the admin costs to the permit funds based on the, uh, that division. It is running about two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, um, of, uh, uh, general fund money coming from that and into, uh, the permit. About two hundred and fifty of that goes into permit and then it actually does redistribute some of it to street and storm, just based on the overall distribution percentages. Um, as I mentioned, I do need to get into that a bit deeper just to see how, um, sustainable that really is and whether or not the um, percentages that we're using for things like expenditures for the AP accountant. I need to pull some of like the salary benefits, some of the things that they don't actually touch. I need to pull those out of there so I can re-figure that actual allocation, but about two hundred thousand dollars per year. And we are looking at doing, uh, the 2025 as well. So we have pulled together those numbers as well. So we'll look at doing that. Um, and that is ongoing, um, year over year. And so it does help the general fund quite a bit. Um, community development, as I mentioned, doing the direct allocation of staffing to the permit fund. Um, this is gonna help capture more of the costs for their, uh, department. For example, we have, uh, the permit, one of the permit specialists, ninety-nine point nine percent of their time is working on permits. But the way we were being overly conservative with the allocation is we weren't capturing their leave time. The leave time was just going to the general fund and not to actual permits. And so, um, if it, again, if it was a full position, it would, um, be in the, um, permit fund. So we're looking at how we're distributing that. And so we're putting it directly into the fund and capturing those. And then, um, anytime that's not, um, utilized for that, we will actually move out of the permit fund. And then they are gonna continue tracking this on their timesheets. So every year we can go through the calculation and make sure it's still accurate. Couple of little things. So the North Cove project, um, over here, the police boat relocation project had, uh, fifty-four thousand dollars, uh, allocated to the project out of the general fund. We just moved that out into a project, uh, fund. The janitorial, we've talked about a number of times, eliminated the two, uh, FMT positions, the field maintenance tax, and we're doing a limited contract that does save about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. It looks like the general fund, I think they were about eighty percent, uh, general fund. So that saves about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars per year. Uh, vehicle lease policy, as Director Halverson talked about, increasing from a five-year standard replacement to seven years. There is gonna be a, um, a gap year in order to, uh, find these actual savings, but it's about fifty-one thousand dollars, uh, per year. The next one, um, WCIA insurance, we just discussed this this morning. And so I actually, I just updated in my spreadsheet. Um, so it's not in the total, but it's, um, about, uh, forty-three thousand dollars to general fund, sixty-four thousand dollar change. So what this is, is to raise the deductible for property insurance. Um, I believe our deductible is five thousand right now and changing it to twenty-five thousand will save us about sixty-four thousand dollars a year. And, um, I believe that, um, Director Warrington and her risk manager went through the, the list of the claims that were under the dollar amount and this is feasible. They actually gave us a, um, a look at decreasing our liability or increasing our liability deductible as well. And, um, I think we're kind of looking at not doing that yet. Start with the property, kind of see where we land, um, on claims and go from there. Um, another one we looked at, um, is the city attorney. We have gone through the process of requiring, um, uh, Greg to be at a lot of our, our meetings, our internal staff meetings. And we need to kind of look at limiting that, um, those meetings, maybe have him first. Let him go, um, only utilize him when we need him, limit the use, um, utilize MRSC when we can. Um, we have done a lot of uh, the, um, standard contracts and going through those. So looking at limiting the use a bit more, being a little more careful on that. A few that we already have in the, uh, budget, uh, Viva Vacation Cash Out, uh, that was a program that was in the budget a couple of years. We have held that position, or held that program for now. Uh, contribution to art, no contributions in 2026, except for the ones coming out of projects. So projects that have eligible funds, there's a one percent contribution to that. Uh, tuition reimbursement, we're holding that program for 2026. And then the UGA annexation, again, holding the expense in 2026. So, um, just in the, um, general operating fund, this changes the base about eleven percent. So looking at insurance, this is, uh, something that a couple of council members asked about, uh, looking at. Some of these numbers are slightly different from, um, or in the colas, we'll look at some of those are a little bit different from what, uh, were presented in the salary survey. Some of the, some of the interpretations of numbers are a little different than what we actually have in our budget. So, um, here is right, we have what we have right now. So citywide, our current uh, practice is, uh, employees pay zero percent and then their dependent, dependent spouses and dependents are ten percent. Overall, uh, that's three point six million dollars in medical dental, uh, payments per year. Uh, general fund gets about two point three million of that. Um, nonrepresented, so we kind of broke this down, nonrepresented Teamsters Guild, uh, just based on the fact that there are different contracts and what you can do when. Um, if we looked at charging employees a five percent and increasing the dependent cost to fifteen percent, uh, it would be a total, uh, city reduction of a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars overall. And the general fund would be about sixty-three percent. Adding that Teamsters in there, you're talking an additional fifty-three thousand and then the Guild, an additional ninety-six. And that entire portion is in the general fund. We also looked at what the estimate cost for the employee is to insure themselves only. And you're looking at um, about six hundred dollars a year at that five percent. Um, current, current, with the current policy, the way it is at the ten percent for families, it's a estimated about two thousand dollars per year. Um, based on what I had in my figures, I would have to go back. This is kind of a quick last minute looking at these. Um, about two thousand dollars annually for dependents. Increasing it to fifteen percent, it would increase it to about three thousand dollars per year, um, just for the dependent side of it. And then if we went to ten percent for employee, twenty percent for dependents, um, it's two hundred and ten thousand dollars for nonrepresentatives, eighty-eight thousand for Teamsters and a hundred and sixty for the Guild. Um, and then the cost for the self would be approximately twelve hundred dollars annually. And then the family would be about four thousand dollars annually. Any questions on that? Any direction on that? Okay, next one. HRA VIBA. So we've talked about a couple of different things. We have, uh, dual insurance opt-out incentive.
So what's the direction on that? I know it was a hot topic last time we talked. Something somewhere we want to go.
I'd say that's the last resort.
I would agree.
Okay.
Okay, uh, HRA VIBA. So dual opt-out, um, so this provides an incentive for employees to not cover dependents and spouses, um, and their families under the insurance, city insurance. And this is generally when they already have coverage elsewhere. So I'm not adding my husband just because I can, because it only cost me ten percent. Um, so this reduces the potential cost to, to the city. Um, you're incentivizing them not to add people. It's not a real cost savings unless they actually did it and then took it off. But, um, there are eleven participants currently, um, Teamsters and nonrepresentatives. Um, so the incentive right now is based on fifty percent of the employee only rate. Uh, in 2025, that monthly rate was four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And then 2026, based on, uh, medical insurance increases, it'll be about five hundred and eighteen dollars per month. Some options we looked at, we could just maintain the incentive under the current percentage, no change. Um, it, we could freeze the incentive, uh, no increases or reduce it to a flat rate incentive. Um, that could potentially save money. Again, it's a reduction in, uh, benefit to, uh, your employees. Uh, the next one, this is a little bit different. Some of these numbers are a little bit different than, uh, what was in the earlier presentation. So, uh, ninety percent CPI at two point four four for non reps that, um, are in our, in our, our stuff is two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, general fund, it's about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, some of the differences we kind of talked about is, um, whether or not, um, their data had the, the promotions already involved. Mine doesn't have the current promotions involved. So, um, the, the commander going to deputy chief and then these things that my, mine doesn't quite have that in there yet. Um, Teamsters, so obviously they're in negotiations. If you use the non-rep, um, percentage, then sixty-six thousand Guild, commissions at three percent and non-commissions at, at the ninety percent of CPI. So that's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So if you were looking at not doing colas, again, you kind of went through a little bit more in depth with, uh, Director Warrington's, um, this is what you're, you're kind of looking at there. So this is kind of taking a look at the comparison of the mayor's preliminary budget for all of the funds. Um, this is where we land right now. So the top two um, are our general funds and other general funds. And then the, uh, table down below that is the breakout of the general operating and all of the other funds that are in other general funds. Um, so in the other general funds, you have the reserve fund, the permitting managerial funds, pandemic recovery fund, and then the rentals, which is all of our commercial uh, management funds. So as you can see, the changes that we have made and have been making since base budget, um, have actually increased our general operating cash balance to two point five million dollars. Yes, we are still overspending our revenues, but we do have a balanced budget. When you're looking at whether a budget is balanced or not, you take your, all of your resources, which include your beginning cash balance and your revenues, and you compare those to your expenditures. So you do have a balanced budget. We're just more looking forward at slowing down the overspending of revenues over expenditures, or expenditures over revenues. And so that's kind of what we're looking at here. So we've made some changes um, in this budget, based on the mayor and the council's direction and what we are looking for. We just keep going through and, and making changes. And so this is where we are right now. This shows the difference between the base budget, where we were when we started this process, and then the changes that staff have made and we have made based on reallocations and changing funding sources. Again, we went from, uh, five point three million dollar, um, revenue or expenditures over revenues to one point three six five. Again, this does not include the salary survey information, just colas at this point.
Does this also include the, uh, sales tax?
It includes the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar sales tax as well as the five hundred and seventy dollar, thousand dollar, uh, stormwater utility tax. So it does include both of those at this point. And this is just the final, don't call it that, Kim. It's not the graph of gloom and doom. It's fine. This is our general fund forecast. So as you can see in, uh, 2028, so looking at these different ones, the purple line is the amended preliminary. This is the one that we brought forward to council on the, uh, September thirtieth. Said, please go back, do more work, let's see what we can find. Uh, twenty twenty-six orange is the current proposed. Um, it shows us with, uh, four point, uh, nine nine seven, uh, million surplus in 2028. What we do have to take into consideration is that green line, that is all general funds. So that is taking into consideration the permit fund, which is still overspending itself. And so it actually brings it down to three point four million. So we have pushed ourselves out quite a bit, but we still have a lot of work to do. I think one of the biggest things we need to continue working on is how are we going to sustain our park and rec department? We have spent a lot of money on that and I know Sarah's doing a great job out there looking and funding and we keep giving her more work to do and more things to spend money on. And so I think that's the big one that we need to continue moving forward with. And I think the mayor would agree on that. It's probably him saying that now through my mouth is we need to really work on how to sustain our park and rec department as well as our unfunded mandates, like our, um, I mean, everything. I'm, I'm, I look over at Aaron, I'm thinking, oh, wait, I'm like thinking streets and storm and everything else, but it's, you know, police and public defense and everything else, but that's my last slide.
In your expense, in your expenses on this, you have the new public defense costs in there, right?
I do.
Did you want me to speak to the exercise that we're?
Yes.
Just went through?
Please.
Perfect. One of the things we talked about the last council, uh, discussion on this budget is what it would look like to do a ten percent cut across the board. And we looked at that and, uh, it's pretty unachievable without losing a significant amount of people. And so we went back and that would impact the bigger departments that have more people in it, obviously to get to that ten percent mark. So Mayor and I looked at it and said, let's, uh, run the exercise of doing another five percent cut. So every department here went through that exercise. Uh, we have that on our desks right now and we'll be meeting tomorrow to go back through that. But just so council knows the landscape, what that means to get to that five percent, for example, is city cell phones gone. Can't, can't afford to have those cell phones. So what does that impact? Your dual authentication to even log into a computer. Uh, the municipal services division has six employees in it and we would have to cut the supplies down to where each employee would have eighty-three dollars a month, or a year to operate. That's pens, pencils, uh, paper. And so, you know, that's not achievable. All the way down the line, even looking at the, uh, groups that we sponsor, uh, you know, uh, we, we give money to various groups like senior centers. We don't want to cut them and, and all the other groups. We help the Aqua Fest, uh, the other big events that we, the community needs and we sponsor by putting employees there, that wouldn't happen. Uh, going to Washington DC, we'd have to pick a few of us to go. And that would be it. Having a lobbyist might not be a thing. So that's, that's basically where we're at right now. We, to, to get to the five percent cut. So we are gonna go through that list tomorrow and decide we can do onesie twosies of these things to make it work. But to achieve another five percent cut just is pretty drastic, if you will.
But another way to look at it be, instead of that, looking where that red line dips to zero at twenty-nine instead of twenty-eight. Because what you just brought back looks a whole lot better than it did at the end of September. I mean, instead of running out of money in twenty-six, that red line dips down in twenty-eight.
Is, does it make sense to do it that way as well?
I, I don't think I understood you correctly.
Instead of thinking about a five percent cut now and how that affects twenty-six, does it make more sense to look at how do we prolong when the line dips? So how do we change what twenty-nine looks like?
I think we need revenues.
Well, I know that, but I, that just seems to be, that's the name of the, that's the name of the game.
I think we need more revenues.
I mean, if you go back, well, yeah. Go sell yours back. We crossed the line, you know, back in two thousand, you know, that kind of thing. And then it goes out another four years, down another four years, down another four years. That's the way it's always done. That's because you've got new revenues coming in year over year.
It's a cash flow issue.
Yeah, it's a cash, yeah, it's a cash.
Cash flow issue.
Great. So that's what it really is. You get more grants in one year than you do the next year, the line changes. It's all, it's all that.
I'll go back to what Barb was saying and nothing against Sarah, but Sarah's, Sarah's an unfunded $3 million a year that when we added the parks, which we absolutely needed to add the parks, we didn't have revenue for it, right? We're taking it out of hide. So we've got to somehow fix that, I think. That's, that's the way forward to keep this line moving forward.
So I'm going to ask a couple of silly questions here, but where does the, assuming we sell Chapel Hill and close that deal, where does that money go?
That is already slated for the civic center, municipal services.
The home store is opening up when? Do we have any idea?
Home goods?
They haven't initiated anything? Okay. Uh, I guess it'd be helpful to know that if they're moving forward. And I get that kind of leads to the economic development equation. We're not really doing much in that regard. So what can we do to promote Lake Stevens? This issue has come up a little bit in the political arena here in the last couple of months. But from my standpoint, I don't think we're doing enough. And we, instead of looking at a situation of cutting, we need to aggressively figure out how we're going to grow our revenues. And so I just, we, we need to put together an action plan and start working on it. So whether a few of us are here come January or not, I just, the city needs to move forward with revenue generation. So.
And one thing I didn't mention is we are looking at B and O taxes. We haven't gotten far enough in it to actually bring you anything. Our IT director and is at the ACES conference this week and he was just messaged me saying he was sitting at a table with the directors of Bellevue and Redmond or Renton, they actually, they built software to track B and O taxes and they actually sell it to other cities. I've heard this many times. I was like, can you get a quote on that? I want to see what that actually looks like. Cause I know we're kind of talking about that and it's going to take more software and potential staff to run this. And I want to know what that cost benefit analysis looks like. So so we're looking at these additional things that won't affect your citizens. It'll be businesses, but it'll still affect your citizens who own businesses. Yeah.
We've talked about it for years.
Yes.
It is that, you know, we don't have a B and O tax and that is one of those things that businesses look at when they're going to go build somewhere. Yeah, you know, we're, we're looking at many, many little balances.
Yep.
Ryan.
Oh, there we go. Just on that, not to mention that, you know, I think right now is probably not a great time to be talking about B and O taxes, given what has just happened with the state level taxes. So I mean, I'm all for increasing revenues, but that's something I think we need to be careful on.
I agree. All right. What else we got for Barb?
I was gonna say, what other questions do we have? We can, I, I think we're planning to come back next week. We'll come back with some. If council has a direction we want to look at on the salary survey, based on what we've heard tonight. Where we are, I'll pull out the 375.
I guess for me, the, the four police officer position, the September 30th meeting was proposed, if those be eliminated. I'm totally opposed to that because once those go away, you know, the, it's, they're not coming back. And when the citizens heard about that proposal, talked to many of them and they're not happy in any way about even suggesting that. As far as the 10% cut overall, that would disproportionately, or 5%, whatever, disproportionately affect our police services because they're half of the general fund. So when, at the height of the defund the police movement for Snoomish County, they proposed a four and a half percent cut to police. And so that was going to eliminate a huge chunk of boots on the ground. And so it took a significant effort to prevent that from happening. I just want to say that I would like to support public safety. And as far as economic development, there is a business that's opening up, protecting $9 million in revenue. And they cited the Lake Stevens area because of public safety. Other businesses are paying over $100,000 in private security to provide basic services for safety services that they don't have to provide here because of our community. So if we want economic development, being a safe city is something we need to provide. But I, those charts, I, I, it's frustrating to me that every year I see that our revenues exceed our expenses. Or excuse me, our expenses exceed our revenue. Our funds are dwindling down, you know, we have to make appropriate adjustments to balance that. And I, I don't necessarily agree with the balanced budget explanation, Barb, and all due respect. I, I, I just don't, I don't support that definition. Because just because you have money there, you definitely spend long enough, you just don't have that money. And we don't have the ability to increase our revenue absent raising taxes. And that's just not, that's a difficult conversation to have. So those are my, my two cents. I appreciate the, like Kurt said, I really appreciate the numbers have been adjusted and they look much more favorable today than they did September 30th. But we still need to, we still got, we still got work to do.
And I will say, as you can see in that 2024 actual, that the, the expenditures had been budgeted to be quite a bit more than the revenues. And that occurs every year just based on estimates. And then when we get to the end of the year, that's when we readjust and we say, look, we got more revenues than we had. We spent less expenditures and we move forward. So generally your, it won't be this as far off as we are generally usually a million to a million and a half to a million dollars more expenditure. So you're absolutely correct. We, we are spending more than we're bringing in. But resources are resources and expenditures are expenditures. It's, it's, it's how every city balances their budget. It's what you have versus what you spent. And so that, that is a balanced budget. I do agree, we're spending deficit. We are in a deficit mode, but it is a balanced budget.
Anything else for Barb?
I think just to answer the question about cost of living and staffing increases, it doesn't feel like this is the right time to make structural adjustments or to bring folks to market. But I do support a cost of living increase. I think that given where we're at as an economy, it feels like not having a basic 2.4% cost of living for me doesn't feel like the right direction that we want to go. But I think we need to hold off on the bigger market rate adjustments.
I see Ryan has his hand up.
Yeah, last thing, so I, I don't want to frame this as pinning everything on Sarah. This is more, I guess, if anything complimentary, I've been very impressed with what you've done with the Parks Department in the time you've been here. And so if I'm looking at this, you know, if we are essentially buying ourselves time here with our, our deficit, I, I guess at a very high level, I'm not looking for anything, you know, especially given the, the prose presentation we received. I'd, I'd be interested at a future date in hearing, you know, in your mind, in the mayor's mind, kind of what are the big milestones you're targeting, you know, as far as park development, revenue development? I know we've talked about that, but at what point, you know, if we were going to try and make parks self-sustaining, you know, I'd like an idea of when you see that happening in the future. And that would help me personally, making these budget decisions, knowing, you know, like, okay, at this point in time, we could expect that, that department to start producing revenue and not just drawing on the general fund. I feel much more comfortable having an end date like that than just, you know, looking at this line that keeps getting bumped out. So anything you can provide, you know, along those lines would be helpful.
Thank you. We'll come back with something.
Thank you.
That's for tonight.
I mean, if you've got it ready to go, but I don't, I don't want to keep anyone long and be happy. I don't want to put you on the spot. Just that's kind of when I hear that, that's where I'm at. It's like, okay, what, what's the, you know, kind of the payback horizon on investing this, investing in this great Parks Department that we have now.
You want to take a one minute swag? That would be
One minute swag. We've done a preliminary cost recovery and it's looking just about 10% for cost recovery at this point. So that's expenditure, expenditures versus revenue. And so I think it is really the appetite of the council of what do you want your cost recovery to be in parks? It is rare to be at 100%, but it can't happen. Mainly, we are going to have to start doing business as a Parks and Recreation Department. And that looks like having a recreation center and being able to generate that revenue. And we can do it. We have buildings coming up. But we could either become a contract city, which Parks and Recreation Departments do. And we stay small, but you can't keep asking for more events, more this, more that. We can certainly work on some options and come back with a proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Yeah, on economic development, I just want to comment on that. Any help council can get our help. Spread the word about 20th Street. And now that we have an agreement in place between Russ, Mayor and I, we've been reaching out to people. Starting the day after it was passed. I know Mayor met with somebody again today. So any help you guys could give when you're out talking to the community, hey, we're open for business.
All right, great.